So is it the three, on the bottom, is it the 349 and change plus the 335? Because the new one is smaller.
No, the new one is 349, I think, what was the original one? Oh, the original one.
So then...
I'm sorry, the resolution. And then we have the bills continued. And so the bills continued, the old one was 331, and the new one is 335. So 4,000.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm not following because the one I get in the packet says 349, 967, 33.
That's for the resolution. We're talking about the bills continued.
They are.
So you'd have to go farther on because it's the resolution plus the bills continued.
Yes.
Any more questions on the bills? If not, may I have a motion? To approve the bills and the continued bills.
Madam Chairman, I'll move to approve the bills as presented in the resolution record and the continued cover page.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Francheck.
We should do a... Oh, I'm sorry. I interrupted you.
That's okay.
Excuse me.
It's okay. Commissioner Messer.
Again, I...
Okay, Commissioner Francheck.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. The county, Stark County Spirit of Excellence Award, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Julie Overgewich, and I'm coming forward today with another recipient that we recently awarded with the Stark County Spirit of Excellence Award. As you know, as previously mentioned, we've been doing the Stark County Spirit of Excellence Awards since last year. We did six awards last year. This year, we are doing four. The mayor selects the recipient through a blind process in the categories of leadership, customer service, innovation, stewardship, and also Good Samaritan, excuse me, Random Acts of Kindness. In late April, we did present our February award recipient, which was Mike Kelly of McDonald's. And we have a video that we'd like to share with you as well.
It's hard to pick just one area to nominate Mike under. Mike has been a pillar in our community for many, many years with his balance business. If you go in there at any given time, especially during the busy lunch rush or when a bus rolls in, you can find Mike doing many different positions throughout the business. It's not uncommon to see him working the deep fire or delivering food for the order section. Throughout all of this, he is always incredibly thankful to his team. I have personally seen him come to the front counter after a busy lunch hour and yell, "Excellent work, everyone." Thank you to his team. The only area I feel Mike deserves particular credit for is his giving. He's incredibly generous with his business. I think back to my youth, and I cannot remember the day without the McDonald's high-seating. He has donated to countless events, activities, equal-scale projects, mine being one of them, and individuals throughout our community. As a former paramedic in the Dickinson area, I cannot recall a major fire standby without someone coming with donated McDonald's food. Mike is also extremely generous with the Ronald McDonald House charities and cabin fever benefit in the area. My daughter has a congenital heart defect. She's been kind of popping up on the screen, and that's her on our various visits to the Ronald McDonald Houses. So we've stayed at multiple Ronald McDonald Houses over the past few years, keeping us close to her and her hospital team. Mike has a picture of her sitting by the Ronald statue in his office to see one of the many children he's helped. Again, as I stated before, I look at the nomination criteria, and I think I could honestly check every box for Mike Kelly. I feel like he would personally be most proud of his brothers as a Good Samaritan, providing countless Random Acts of Kindness, and that is what I ultimately nominated under. Thank you for your consideration.
Our community is blessed tonight, and gay. We are proud of you, dear friend.
Mike was one of the leaders of this group, and thanks to Mike and Kay's unavenging support and leadership, the Ronald McDonald House was celebrated its 30th birthday this July 18.
McDonald's Corporation has recognized Kelly like you're recognizing right now in the Ronald McDonald community.
He walks over to the drive-through window and out to the lobby, and he says hi to somebody. You swear he's known that person for 35 years.
You've been an ambassador for McDonald's for over 40 years. Anyone who knows you or have come in contact with you have experienced your passion to put people first, and you've established a reputation for McDonald's as being an employer of choice.
Mike's always gone, and all of beyond, and taken it to the next level. Congratulations. You were well deserved.
Mike was the only guy that spearheaded the addition out of the library, and then the book will be, because of Mike, it's still running here in southwest North Dakota.
I consider Mike one of my best friends, so I appreciate him as a friend. We both do things together.
Mike and Kay, you two are some of the best people I've ever known in my life. I think we've done a lot for countless loved people. When everybody says here that this man is a pillar of our community, they're not lying. He is, and we really do appreciate that. So Mike, do you want to come forward? I'd like to present you with this award. This is the Stark County Spirit of Excellence Award for Mike Kelly in recognition of outstanding excellence in Good Samaritan and Random Acts of Kindness. I mean, will you appreciate all you do for this community and southwest North Dakota?
Thank you. Well, I didn't know I had this many friends. I'm glad to see all you guys. This is really a surprise. I kind of thought something was going on because when we got up this morning, I used to come out of the storm. Later, I'd gone breakfast, and then I'd been on our... Then we left, said goodbye. And then we had to drive downtown, and I thought, wow, I don't know. I knew something was going on. It's a pleasure. I want to know if you've had good years here, and the biggest things I think we've done since I've been at McDonald's is the Ronald McDonald House. Something that means a lot to me, it means a lot to the people in North Dakota. We started that years ago. She said 30 years ago. I didn't make any difference 30 years ago whatsoever. But Kathy's done a good job, and I guess the thing is very much success over the years. As Phil mentioned, I like people. I know people better than food. And when I hired Dale, I told him that people are the main thing in our business. We've got a lot of cool people. We've got a lot of managers. They know a lot about this business. We've got a good secretary, Jacob, in our office. They're really good for me, and they are. I appreciate all the input, and thank you.
Well deserved. This is beautiful. Thank you, guys.
You can't say no to Mike Kelly. He doesn't say no to any of these people in town that need anything, and we sure appreciate it. Thank you, Mike and Kay.
Mike and Kay, it's been great being your friends through everything from bartending to the cabin fever committee, to when I worked with the convention bureau, and you around the board. Love you guys dearly.
The day was about Mike, and you know, having everyone join together in a room to share such positive, awesome stories about someone else, you really, you cannot put a value on that.
We're taking up quite a lot of this dining room, so.
They brought cake. So before you add the cake, if you'd like something to eat, before you add the cake, we're all open, we're not hampered.
This Spirit of Excellence Award is an awesome way to acknowledge and show appreciation of your tireless commitment and charitable contributions over the years. Congratulations. Well deserved.
I have a comment.
There was a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a real quick story about my experience with Mike. In 1967, I went to work at the Esquire Steakhouse downtown, and Mike, of course, was the new owner of the, or of the business at that time, buying it from Bill Bedoin. Anyhow, 85 cents an hour, and every Friday, we would have to go from the kitchen upstairs to his office, and he would give everybody their little envelope. You didn't get a paycheck, you got cash with a little pay stub in it. And I was just a juvenile delinquent at the time, right? And he had never forgotten my name through all those years. Anytime I might casually bump into him, wherever, it was always, "Hi, Ken. How you been?" And then one other real quick story. I have a son that lives out in the Seattle area, and we were visiting out there, and some friends of friends showed up and got to talking, and this lady says, "Well, where are you from?" And I said, "Dickinson, North Dakota." She goes, "Oh, my God, I used to live in Dickinson. Do you know Mike Kelly?" I said, "Yeah, I do." "Well, I worked for him." And I said, "Well, when was that?" She said, "1967, '68." And I said, "Well, I worked there at the same time." And so all of a sudden, but the point being is that all of those comments made, absolutely true. One of the classiest guys there is. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. That comment that you just shared was one of so many repetitive things that was, that were said throughout that morning at McDonald's. And you know, we wanted to have it at McDonald's because, well, it was very appropriate because that, of course, that's, that's his, that's his place. But you know, we knew that he wanted to share the day with his staff, and we knew that he would accredit much of his success to his staff. And like I mentioned, you know, at the award presentation, you know, he wasn't given, he wasn't awarded this award because, you know, he's Mike Kelly. You know, he was awarded this award because of the awesome things that he does for not just McDonald's, but for, you know, kids with the Ronald McDonald House, you know, the cabin fever benefit. He's just, he's a great person with amazing customer service that, you know, you mentioned that you ran into people in a different town. Someone mentioned during the presentation that, gosh, I think, I can't remember who it was. It doesn't matter, but they had said that they were at an airport, and I forget where it was at, but they had mentioned, "Did you, do you know Mike Kelly?" You know, and that they would run into someone at an airport so far away that wouldn't know him too. So it was very well deserved, so I appreciate your comments, and we appreciate having Dean at the presentation as well. The next deadline for the awards will be May 15th, so it's coming up very, very quickly. Again, we're doing just four this year. So if you know of someone that is deserving, we love having just a couple hours to highlight them and to show appreciation for all they do. Stark County Sheriff ND is the website where you can go to. I'll be sharing this video later today on Facebook. You can catch it there too, so feel free to share away because we really want to highlight Mike and share with the public what he does for the great county of Stark County. So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for the excellent job you do with this. I've attended pretty much all of these. I think I missed a couple maybe, but you do an excellent job, and I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Sheriff report, Corey Lee.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Stark County highlights for the month of April 2022. We had 1,144 calls for service in May. That is down from 1,475 last year. And of course, we had two extreme weather conditions that, of course, drove those numbers down. You'll see that through the remainder of the report, but obviously, we're not doing a lot of traffic stops and things when it's blizzarding out twice in a month. 156 traffic stops, this is down from 254 last year. 51 of those stops from the city of Dickinson, 105 of those stops from the neighboring communities and small towns in the county. 159 PR stops, this is down from 242 last year. 10 bar checks, that's up from five last year. 10 theft-related calls for service, that's up from seven last year. 49 transports, that included seven prisoner, one assist, five court, three juvenile, zero medical, and five mental health. Had 21 canine usages, had two truck rig stops. She participated in 29 other calls for service last month. 39, or excuse me, 37 agency assists, that's up from 31 the month before. Responded to 21 accidents, zero, those were pedestrians, zero fatality, thank goodness, three hit-and-run, especially with that weather, four injury, and 14 property. There were 73 total arrests for the month of April. Obviously, again, I'm going to touch on the fact that those were two major winter storms. You know, we've been through a pandemic and a storm of the century, so it's been an interesting time for us. We want to thank the road department and emergency management for all their help. We couldn't have done any of this without them. They were both amazing. And I say road department, I mean both the cities and the county. We also want to publicly thank Glenn Baronco for offering his side-by-side. That was a lifesaver. So thank you, Glenn. We attended the behavioral health summit that Ken Nelson, Deb Nelson's brought to you in front of you guys last month. It was an amazing summit in Watford City. Myself and three of the staff attended. Again, it was amazing. I also wanted to touch on again the suicide rate in the county this year. Last year, we had approximately 16 suicides over the course of 2021. This year, we're already at nine, and that's the solid ones that we know about. Of course, some of the overdoses and things like that are always questionable, but I do want to get out-of-state travel approved to, from you guys. That would be, coming up in a couple of weeks here, that would be Deputy Steve Byrne, the acquisition from Bellfield and his canine. Looking to send them out to Minnesota for some remedial stuff. Essentially, I'm just asking for the fuel. The city of Bellfield canine fund is presumptively going to take care of the hotel. There's no cost for the training itself, so that would be five days.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Or any dis... Okay. I'll just do it all in favor. I won't do a roll call.
It's your choice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Since it came up last month here, Deputy Klot reminded me, since we were talking about canine Jerry Lee last month, that he reminded me that he was never introduced to the commission, so I'd like to do that today real quick here. In addition to that, it's also Jerry Lee's fourth birthday today, so if you would wish him a happy birthday. This is Jerry Lee's handler, Elsie.
Jerry Lee. This is Elsie. Elsie's five. Jerry Lee, like Corey said, is his fourth birthday. Elsie is my number-one assistant when it comes to working with Jerry at home and even on days off. She helps me feed him. She helps me put him outside, clean up after him, and the other dogs as well. She's been an intricate part in his development as far as socializing him with people. I'm able to take him into schools now without any worries. I think Elsie is interested in maybe showing you a couple of things that he'll do for her, if you want to, Elsie. She's kind of shy at this point.
Elsie, do you want to show us some things you can do with your dog? We'd love to see him.
Here, I'll hold the leash. If you want to grab, get his ball. Here, come. You can see she has no problem. Elsie, stand up. She has no problem getting down in front of him. She's going to be bashful. Sit. Good. Okay, go ahead, hold the ball out. Yes. If you can play the tug with him, he'll play all day long with her. He's been on the trampoline with her, go play in the snow together. He plays well with the other dogs as well. I've got a little dog that's about the size of his head, and there's no aggression issues there at all. Mixes well with the family. This is my wife over here, this is Roseanne. She also helps with him.
What a great addition.
Questions for Dave or Jerry Lee?
We debate the whole Jerry, Jerry Lee name every day, so. Anybody's got any questions?
Thanks for bringing that in.
Take your dog out.
Your name's Elsie, right? Elsie, thanks for everything you do for that dog. Thank you. Okay, county road, Mr. Heiser.
Did we have, should we?
Government class from my high school.
I would like to thank the class for coming. I'm sorry, I should have acknowledged them all, but thank you for coming. Yes, you bet.
Well, good morning, everyone. Just a, kind of quick update, we're trying to get some roads bladed. Believe it or not, with all the moisture, the roads are actually getting kind of hard to dry again. We have a bid opening here at 10 o'clock on some, some projects. One thing I was, it's kind of exciting for some of our kids over at Jefferson Elementary, the North Dakota LTAP has what they call a sign warrior calendar, so you can actually color a sign and put it up somewhere. And actually, two kids from Jefferson were chosen to be put in the 23 calendar. So next Friday, on the 13th, myself and probably the sheriff, send one of his people over to, over to the school to, you know, give them their award for that, so which, you know, and any kids, it's all fourth graders in the whole, you know, the whole state that put in for it. Two girls from Jefferson were actually chosen this year, so which I thought was kind of neat. One other thing Karen brought up at the resolution, we need to sign the resolution for Northern Plains due to construction engineering for them two box culverts that we're going to put in this summer. Actually, we only received two RFPs, one from Northern Plains and one from HDR, which they actually backed out. Apparently, they lost some staffing or something. So we did the interview, Bernie, was it Tuesday? Tuesday, I think it was. So we did the interview here and went through everything, so. So I'll have to sign a resolution to get it sent into the state, so.
Can I get a motion on that so I can sign it, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to select Northern Plains Engineering for the construction engineering on BRO CPD 0045, 007. It's PCN 23166, structure numbers 45-146-26.0 and 45-149-19.0.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote. Commissioner Francheck.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
One other brief item, I'd like to thank my staff for this last snowstorm we had. Some of them actually camped out in Richardson shop, and it was quite a challenge, and I never realized how many times the ambulances have to go out during the night until we have to go ahead of them, so, you know, I want to thank them. And Shawna, she kept everybody kind of abreast where we were at, what we were doing, so.
I'd like to add on to that because, like I said, when we had that little breakfast over at, at the shop, I did get multiple calls saying, "What a good job the county did getting out there and doing the work they were doing," and that reflects back on me, you know. No, it was amazing. That's good.
And it was tough because we actually sent somebody out to rescue somebody, and actually, the guy ran the loader in the ditch, and we ought to be rescued ourselves. So that's, some people don't really realize when it's no travel advised, how it puts everybody else at risk because, but anyway, we had a good outcome. MDU had a power outage, so they managed to rescue us on their way through, so anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Question for you, Al. So now, in heading your, where this truck got washed off that low water crossing?
Yes.
Is heading your county any liability on that?
Well, usually, they're, they're signed properly. We have ours all signed, you know, if do not cross of waters over the road. I think they were probably, it's really unfortunate and sad that it happened, but they're probably just weren't familiar. Yeah, because that's what it is. Our crossings are all signed, if there's any water in all, do not attempt to cross them.
That's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Highland Engineering, Mr. Nice.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Quick report today. Bridge replacement project southeast of Richardson on 80th Avenue Southwest. We got the final plan submitted, environmental document approved, and we're on the June 10th bid letting to the DOT. It's the bridge replacement northeast of Richardson. We do not have any funding yet for that, but we are going ahead on the environmental clearance process and the PSNE plans, and so we're working on those two items right now. So we hopefully get some funding through, some federal funding this summer through the bipartisan infrastructure bill, so. Does anybody have any questions on either project?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Northern Plains, Jeremy Wood.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Few brief updates, starting with construction projects that carryover project at Bellfield, a little bit of seeding left to do and erosion control. They'll do that as time permits, which might be fairly soon if, if conditions allow. The 38th Street Bridge that Wilson Construction's going to be building, we're trying to get a pre-job set up in the next couple of weeks. He's intending on starting sometime in June, so that one should start, start pretty soon. The 83rd and 86th Avenue Bridge Project south of Richardson, the county has just awarded the construction engineering to us, so what you see on the screen is, is kind of old news there, but it sounds like Martin Construction is starting potentially in October as a, as a starting date for that project, so be a little bit of time before you see much action on that. Some of the design projects we've been working on, we have a bid opening set up in about 10 minutes for some paving projects, which is 116th Avenue west of Dickinson, 36th Street east of town is about 1,000 feet, and then the cop relief subdivision will be bid here at 10 o'clock. Another project we're looking at a June bid opening for is 32nd and 107th Avenue, the grading portion of that project. We got just a few remaining easements to acquire, and, but we're looking for a June bid opening for that project. Then a couple DOT projects we're working on, 131st Avenue west of Bellfield, one is northwest and one is southwest of Bellfield. We have the environmental documents submitted to the DOT, and we're looking at a fall bid opening, probably November bid opening with construction in 2023. And lastly, 127th Avenue, we're still kind of waiting on the state archaeologist. Sounds like there's going to be some additional testing. It may not be quite as extensive as we first thought, but... It may not be quite as extensive as we first thought, but he's still determining how much testing he wants. And then we'll test and kind of see what happens after that. But it sounds like we'll get an answer fairly soon from the archaeologists on how much testing there is, so. Other than that, that's all I have on my list. I got that bid opening very soon here, so I'll be around for that and answer any more questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Jeremy. Commissioner Messer, would we have time? We have five minutes to talk about either the courthouse mechanical or the courthouse front entrance?
Not in front.
No, okay.
I can do mine.
Okay. We will do the appointment of primary election inspectors?
I provided to the commission, it's kind of towards the back of your packets, a list of election inspectors for the 2022 primary. We do have some subs. And it's been tricky getting people to want to work elections. But I'm just looking from the commission, an approval of the list of election inspectors provided for the 2022 primary. It's the second to the last page.
And you comfortable that this number meets what you need to get the job done?
Yes, we went by the previous elections.
So this is just inspectors? These aren't all the volunteers and stuff also? These are just?
Well, there's not really volunteers. And they're all paid, and they're either clerks, inspectors, or judges.
Okay.
The inspectors are the ones that are, if you look down below, they're the ones that are basically attached to a machine. And they're responsible for that machine.
Okay. And we can add on to this if need be, correct?
We are also going to have two subs.
Okay.
And so actually, Joetta has agreed to be one of the subs. She's going to train on two different subpositions in case we need her. And then I had one other person, too, that agreed to be a sub.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'll move that the list of the provided inspectors be approved for the 2022 primary election.
Negative, second.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just going back to engineer reports. I know it's not on the agenda, but does KLJ have a report to make? I know we have some stuff in our...
Andrew Krebs from KLJ. Currently, we just have one wetland mitigation monitoring project that is on hold till probably June-ish. We go out there. The only other thing we did was a plat review that Steve asked us to do. Otherwise, we don't have any other current projects with the county.
Okay.
Thank you. I just saw you sitting there, and I was thinking...
Yeah, I mean, I'm still interested in coming to the meetings if somebody is from KLJ if I'm at another meeting. But yeah, I'd just like to know what's going on.
Thank you. Okay, we will wait the three minutes? Do you have to wait to start opening them, too? Right at 10?
10, he's going to bring the sheets.
Amanda, do we have to wait till 10 to start opening them?
How many do you have, Karen?
Thank you.
Shouldn't take more than a minute. Thank you. Thanks, Jeremy.
Amanda, did you want to come over here and look at these as I open them?
Here, you can just, I can...
I got it here. It's just three. All I got to do is look at that back page. Get my quads anything?
Karen, hold on.
Yeah, I'm just going to take off. I'm really fine. No, you're, you're... Got a good excuse. I was going to say, take it easy from someone who pushed it too hard and he just got back.
A minute takes a long time when you're looking at it.